I'd like to call the Crystal City Council meeting to order. Let's start with roll call, please.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Here.
Councilmember Cummings.
Here.
Councilmember Idbo.
Here.
Councilmember Kamish.
Here.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
Councilmember Onessa Rosen.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
We have a board.
All right, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an agenda before us looking for a motion on that agenda. John?
I'd like to make a motion, but I also like to include one change, too.
All right, what's the change?
For one of the donations from the Hope.
The Hope.
Women of Today. Yeah, I think the donation is for Hegemeister Park and not Bassett Creek. So that's, you know, purple.
All right, we'll make that change. Need a motion on that or from the?
No, Mr. Mayor, that's fine. You can just note that it needs to be corrected.
Thank you. All right, we've got a motion looking for a second. Therese?
I will second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We do have a couple proclamations today. I'm going to read those into the record. First one is for Crystal Arbor Day Celebration, May 1st, 2024. Whereas city is a tree city and has been a tree city since 1980, excuse me, 1998, and whereas the Crystal Parks and Recs Commission serves as the Crystal Tree Board, and whereas the Crystal Tree Board, the Parks and Recreation Commission holds an annual Labor Day event to recognize the importance of trees in our community and to provide information to residents on the roles trees play in our community. And whereas the Friends of Crystal Park have provided funds to purchase trees for distribution for residents attending the City Arbor Day Celebration, and whereas the 2024 Crystal Arbor Day Celebration will be Wednesday, May 1st, at 6:00 PM at Skyway Park located at 6112 Florida Avenue North, and it includes Clark Park cleanup, distribution of free Arbor Day trees, information on forestry efforts in Crystal, planting of a northern oak tree in the park, and whereas the City of Crystal wishes to promote the Parks and Rec Commission, the Crystal Tree Board, and Arbor Day Celebration. Now therefore, I, Jim Adams, as the mayor of the City of Crystal, do hereby proclaim May 1st, 2024 as Arbor Day in Crystal. And then the second one is recognizing May 2nd as a day of prayer and fasting in Crystal. Whereas throughout our country's history, citizens of many religions and beliefs have turned to prayer for strength, hope, and guidance. And whereas the First Amendment of our United States Constitution protects the rights of free speech and religious liberty, including the rights of all citizens to pray, and whereas the United States observes an annual National Day of Prayer and Fasting on the first Thursday in May to recommit to the core freedoms that have defined and guided our country from its earliest days, and to celebrate that we can exercise our convictions freely regardless of faith and/or belief. Now therefore, I, Jim Adams, Mayor of Crystal, do hereby proclaim May 2nd as a day of prayer and fasting in Crystal, and that Crystal residents are invited to pray and fast consistent with their own faith for the many freedoms and the benefits and for the benefits of our city, state, and county. Proclaim this April 16th, 2024. And then, uh... Next item on the agenda is the, uh... Presentation of the 2024 Neighbors Recognizing Neighbors Award. And Mike is here for that. Mike Peterson, welcome.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Every spring, the City of Crystal honors those who make Crystal a wonderful place to live and work with its Neighbors Recognizing Neighbors Awards Program, now in its eighth year. Each year, the city seeks nominations from residents who want their wonderful neighbor recognized for their kindness and their helpfulness. This year, the Parks and Recreation Commission reviewed the nominations and picked three winners. Those great neighbors received their inscripted awards recently, and a video presentation by CCX Media had been put together to honor them and their contributions to the community. In this presentation, we will hear about our winners, Dale and Jill Scholz, who are here today, they're in the front room. Thank you for being here. Brian Pertula and Henry and Karen Anager.
How long have you been wearing glasses?
Um, maybe four years now.
About four years?
I had LASIK, but it kind of...
It just wears out.
It wears out.
Dale and Jill were nominated by their next-door neighbor Rita. Rita said that Dale and Jill keep an eye out for us and for our kids, but not just for us. They're involved and conscientious members of the community and care for the whole neighborhood. When my husband was out of town for a funeral, they shoveled our driveway multiple times. Brian Pertula was nominated by his neighbor Debbie and Kirk Woodfill. They said Brian is always concerned and takes care of neighbors in need. He is the first one to show up if help is needed. There were 10 of us that he takes care of. Some were elderly, and he always shoveled walkways and made sure they had everything they needed in the winter. Henry and Karen Anager were nominated by their neighbors Britt and Garrett. They said Henry and Karen are always ready to lend a hand or have a nice chat. Whether it's keeping an eye on packages or lending yard tools, they bring our street together with kindness. Their optimism and genuine connection with everyone make them more than just great neighbors. They're a bright spot in our little community.
I grew up in a neighborhood where everybody knew everybody, and, um, we'd all gather together. And it's transitioned to this neighborhood, too. You don't see a lot of people in winter. Snowstorm comes, we're all out shoveling. Pretty soon, we're all standing in the street visiting. If Henry's gone and I'm shoveling alone, Brett or Kathy or Richard will all come over and say, hey, you need a hand? And it just works both ways.
Well, I've always thought if I have the time and expertise to help somebody, I try to.
All right, that concludes the presentation.
All right, thank you. Well, that's a tradition, eight years. We're going to continue that. I want to thank you for taking the time to come see us. I don't know, sometimes when people come in, we like to ask them questions and talk to them. So I'm going to give the council an opportunity to do that. I'm mostly talking to John over here because he's always got something.
Are you prepared to come up and address the council?
Could you step forward to the microphone? We'd like to just ask this.
Didn't know you were getting it.
Either one of you, you're here.
Probably together. Yeah, it's just... Come on.
There you go.
A team effort, right? Yeah.
I guess we didn't do the video, right?
Yeah, there you go.
So, yeah, now you're on TV live.
I'm Jill Scholz.
Hi, Dale. Well, thank you for what you do in your neighborhood. That's one of the things that we really enjoy trying to promote from the council perspective is that I know we're not in your neighborhood, and what we do here is kind of far removed, but we want to thank you for what you're doing and encourage you to continue to do it and the rest of the people in the city to do the same. John, did you have some?
I just wanted to know if they have any questions of us. I mean, do you have anything that you would like to say to us tonight, since you're here? This is your opportunity.
No, that's a tough one.
Yeah.
That's a loaded question. Thank you for your work.
Yep.
Thanks, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you for yours, too. So...
And it goes both ways. The people that nominated us, they moved in four years ago, and they're great families.
Yep.
We have a great neighborhood.
Cool, that's awesome.
What neighborhood are you guys in?
Just south of Hegemeister Preserve on 40th.
Okay.
Okay.
How long have you lived in Crystal?
We've both lived in Crystal our whole life. I grew up on 45th and Nevada, and he grew up in the house that we're currently living on. We moved there after his parents passed. Our whole life, Crystalites.
Wow, there you go.
Because of the preserve, it was worth remodeling.
Oh, the city, too. Come on.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Well, I hope we see you again some other time. Just don't be afraid of us. We are your representatives, we're here to serve you. So thank you for coming in.
Appreciate it, thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being such great neighbors. Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. It's, I'll read that into the record at this time. Approval of the minutes from the following meetings. The work session from April 2nd and the council meeting from that same date. There's an approval of license applications submitted by the city clerk to the city council. That is on file in her office. Adoption of a resolution accepting donations. We made that change to which park?
Hegemeister.
Hegemeister. And that was from New Hope, Women of Today. Then another one from... I moved to my other, where I had it written down.
Bob's Auto Ranch.
Bob's Auto Ranch.
Bob's Auto Ranch for $300, thank you. Adoption of a resolution approving creation of a new special revenue fund for the police-state aid allotment. And that is our consent agenda, looking for a motion on that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, looking for a second. Tracy?
I will second that.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, open forum is next on the agenda. We have Bert Ord to address the council. Welcome, Bert.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm Bert Ord. Council, you are the victims of your own success. From the concept to the design to the construction and the ultimate end product, the destination parks that we have in Crystal. I'm primarily familiar with the north end. But we seem to have an additional problem, which is maintenance. Why is that? Because they are so popular. I've tried to work a little bit on the inside, but I can tell you in dealing with your staff here in the city, they are up to speed, they are aware of it all, but we seem to be at a kind of a fulcrum. I'm willing to make a few suggestions, such as maybe we can get a couple of the commissions to kind of help out a little bit, maybe DEI, maybe Park and Rec. And maybe even Friends of Crystal Parks, who I don't know who they are. But ultimately, I don't really know what to do about it. The other day, which was last Sunday, just myself at Becker, 50 water bottles littered on the ground. I don't know about you, but that was a lot of work. And I wasn't alone. I had help from the city. I had help from staff. I mean, it's just, I'm shocked. I don't know where to go with it. I'm hoping you guys can come up with some ideas as well to maybe suggest who we can kind of bring together to kind of help this process along to try and resolve this. Because I can pretty much tell you, um, I'd like to talk to the chief or the assistant chief even about certain aspects, but in general, I'd like to see a kind of a greater cohesion with regard to people who have ideas how to solve this problem. And if you just go during like the heaviest times, which we can all tell what it is, the great day, the nice day when everybody's there, usually the weekend. If we can sort of time these issues and just mention it to a few people, I bet you the problem will self-resolve. I just have one other comment to make. Help? Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you for coming in. Thanks for your comments. All right.
Is that more, is it mostly like trash that we're talking? Mostly trash? Okay.
Litter.
What was that? It was mostly a litter problem that you're talking about?
Well, um...
You're going to be at the mic. Bert, you got to be at the mic if you're going to talk to us.
Bert Ord again. I don't want to get ahead of myself. I'll just continue to work quietly with your staff to see what they think about it because, as I said, they're in the know. They seem to be aware of the problem, and they can usually provide me some additional solutions that I'll explore. But I'm just sowing seeds here with council to maybe think, maybe you guys know something that I don't. So, well, actually, that's not quite what I meant. You guys know a lot.
We understand, we understand the heart.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else wishing to speak during open forum? That's all we have. All right, open forum is closed. First item on the regular agenda, our disbursements of $25,000 or greater. At this time, I'll read that into the record. Item one is Golden Valley Joint Water Commission for $139,435. Central or Center for Energy and Environment for Home Improvement Loans and Grant Program, NICS Tree Service for Disease Trees, Removal the Ash Trees, $44,300. Compass Minerals, American for the Winter Road Salt is $35,515. Health Partners for April Health Insurance Premiums, $139,995. IRS Electronic Payments is $71,270. Menpara for the Employee and City Required Contributions for Paydate 3/29 is $72,030. Total disbursements of $25,000 or greater is $536,981.20. Questions on, go ahead, John?
You first? It's about the trees.
No, it's about the salt.
Okay, all right.
All right. John?
So anyways, the number of trees, how many, what's the number of trees that were removed for the $44,300?
Do we know?
I don't have, I can look that up. I can go check on that and report that back. That's typically about, it's about $1,000 to $1,500 a tree. So that's probably in that 30 to 40 range, which is typically what we get per billing.
Is it a quarterly billing or how do we?
It's as, whenever Nick provides them to us. So it's kind of done in batches. Sometimes we'll get two batches, but it's not a standard of as needed because of the... It's used as needed.
All the cities, surrounding cities seem to be, you know, just bringing down trees left and right. So, I mean, it's pretty intense. I mean, just watching them with the equipment that they have, how quickly they can remove a tree, it's very impressive, so.
It is.
Yeah.
It is.
But it's a big number, and I'm assuming it's going to grow, right?
Yeah, there's been, just in the past several months, some late last fall, there were some up in the, you know, 60, 70, $80,000 range. Depends on how, the other, as you said, or as you noted, that you're seeing a lot of activity out there. The issue mainly Emerald Ashbore isn't, you know, it's only getting worse, but also the, there's only so much that can be done at one time because there's only so many tree services available.
Right.
So we're getting them removed as quickly as we can work with tree service that we have to get them, to address them.
And then lastly, I don't know, this is kind of like a sidebar. I saw that Robbinsale was treating their trees. I don't know if that's a...
We have looked into that. What I understand, speaking with former public works director Mark, is that we have, I believe we have treated some, but that's not the route that the city took several years ago. And once, and it is an ongoing cost. Obviously, when you're dealing with, you know, mature trees, losing that at any point is less than ideal. But the approach that Crystal took was, you know, remove the diseased tree and plant a new one, you know, get that going sooner. Not that you can't do both, but Crystal did not go with treating as the main route.
The problem was too extensive, so, yeah.
And supposedly, I had read that same article recently, and it sounds good that they have had better success than I've heard other places.
Right.
The, it's only so effective. And even when you treat it, you know, the intent is not to, I don't say pollute, but create other toxic hazards. But there's always that, you know, we're adding more chemicals into the, I won't say the earth, but...
Subsoil, yeah.
So the decision was made several years ago that Crystal would remove the trees versus focusing on treating them.
I mean, you have Golden Valley, it's not even removing them, so. So the salt order, is that our full annual order? That we like prepaid or pre-ordered essentially? Because obviously, we didn't use a lot of salt this year.
Yep.
Or is that a smaller number?
To keep our contract with the supplier, we have to order so much every year. So, yeah, that was our 2024 order.
Okay, and that wasn't reduced at all?
Uh, we took the minimum that we could do.
Okay.
Just because we still had leftover from last year. Plus, as we all witnessed, there wasn't much of a winter this year.
Okay, so, okay, so next year, we'll still probably have to take the minimum regardless of what the winter...
In 2025, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Correct.
So this won't, all right, interesting. And then was there room for it all?
Yes.
Okay.
At the end of March, storms did help us with getting, using some, but then it's just, we have stockpiles both at our public works facility at the north end of town and then the old public works facility just down the road.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, just a reminder for the council, try to, when you're speaking, be mindful of the people in the sound room and keep your distance similar from the mic because there's, we can fade off when we're moving around. So be mindful of that for them. All right, any other questions? Did, yours was taken?
Mine was on the salt as well, so we answered it.
Any other questions? All right, looking for a motion on that one. Therese?
I will make a motion to approve expenditures over $25,000.
All right, thank you. Tashi?
I'd like to second.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Flipping papers. There it is. Didn't flip it. Next item is the, uh, construction for the Crystal Cove Aquatic Center. And we have John Elhome, our recreational director, to here to address the council. Welcome, John.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. We're here tonight to talk about the Crystal Cove Aquatic Center. I think I showed the slide when we went, when I was here last time, but we did go out for bid, and the items in red are what was out for bid. So it's basically the focus is on rebuilding the container that the water goes in and creating a space so that we can add all those other amenities. You'll be seeing those other amenities at future council meetings, but we want to start out, get the pool built, and then we can, based on budget, look at how other things fit together. So the budget for this is, from the long-term plan, we originally had 2.8 million, and then through discussions, we pulled 500,000 from 2025 earlier, since we're in there working on things. We do have a legislative appropriation of 2.3 million and a head-up and youth activities grant of 300,000. And then just to note that the improvements to the building are a separate budget item, so that's not part of the discussion tonight. So this budget does include the design and the bidding process, which we've already been here for approval. Pool construction item today. Construction management is a future item, and then, like I mentioned, the pool amenities we'll be bringing to future meetings as well. The schedule, the recent schedule, anyway, is we did come here to approve ad for bid on February 20th. We had two advertisements. Bid opening was on April 4th, and then approval of bid agreements is April 16th. Now, I should point out that the bid opening was a week later. We've been working with Kraus Anderson on the bidding process, and it's just been extremely helpful for us to keep the costs down. By delaying a week, they were able to get some questions answered that was able to reduce the cost quite a bit. So we're here on April 16th. Construction is scheduled to begin in June, and then construction will end actually next year in May. And the reason for that, after talking to pool contractors, is the final step is to do the surfacing of the pool itself. And immediately after that, you need to fill it, fill the pool with water. And to do that in October didn't make a lot of sense. And then you drain it, and then it's exposed to winter conditions all winter. So both pool contractors that we were working with suggested that we wait till May, put that final coat on, fill the pool right away, and then that's the best way to get that surface put in. So it should only be like a three-week period in the spring to get that finished up. So as I mentioned, we did go out for bid. There were three items, and you can see the different costs there. Global Specialty Contractors was low on building the pool. Site clearing and earthwork low was Kevitt Excavating, and they are a local firm. Concrete bids, um... Whoa, I didn't touch anything. Uh, Crosstown Masonry was the concrete, low bid on that as well. And I should point out, it wasn't very clear in the memo. I mentioned there was a fourth area. Kraus Anderson estimated that was only about $10,000 item, and it's, contractors don't want to go through the bid process for $10,000, so that we'll just get quotes here in the coming weeks on that.
Is that the iron stuff?
Yeah, basically, I think it's a staircase that goes into the, it was a lower area where the pumps are.
Okay.
So it's a pretty small dollar value item. So the recommendation tonight is to approve the resolution entering into agreements with the following contractors. Global Specialty Contractors, $2,137.7. Kevitt Excavating for $199,000. And Crosstown Masonry in the amount of $165,000. And then authorizing the mayor and city manager to sign those agreements.
All right.
Any questions?
No comment, though. That's really nice. That's a good bid.
Just really nice?
Really.
Just really nice?
Cool. Really nice, yeah. Do you got anything more to add?
No, I just...
You know, you know where my head goes. I always think, okay, so now we have, I don't know if you can say that in public, but extra money, you know, to...
Under budget?
To do something with is kind of where my head goes, and you guys...
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may point out, this is like step two in about five or six.
I understand.
There are other things, and we haven't broken ground to see what's actually under the ground yet, so.
All right, Giljoy.
But, yes, it is good. It is a good thing, yes.
All right, so, yeah, we'll get through the process and we'll see where we end up. Any other questions? Go ahead, Tashi.
Yeah, can you just go back to the budget slide where... Okay, so the, just so I'm tracking, so the total 5.9, that, I mean, as I mean, that includes all the bullets under the includes header, correct? So, but then when I look at, so Kraus Anderson said this stage of the project would cost 3.8. We're at 2.5, so we're over a million dollars under budget, which is great.
For this part, yes.
For this part, yes. So I'm just like, is it fair to assume that we will continue to run a deficit here?
I'm very hopeful that, yes. This is a very good start.
Okay, great. Hope for the best.
All right, yeah. I'm still happy.[1727.81]
I think we're all happy.
So far, so good.
This was nothing but good news.
Yeah.
Yeah.
After all, so what happens throughout the rest?
All right, go ahead.
So, out of that 5.95 million, the building is not, the actual community center is not in that, right? That's a total separate?
So, the entrance to the pool is 700,000. So, you miracle, the last couple of years, we've had 3.5 million for the aquatic center. So, we took 700,000 for the building, 2.8 for the pool. And then, in discussions with the council, we brought, there were a few items that we brought from 2025 earlier, since we were under construction. It made sense to do them at the same time.
So, it's not in that?
Yes.
Or it is in that?
No, it's not in, the 5.9 does not include improvements to the building.
But the 2025 improvements have, are part of that?
Correct.
Is that where you're getting caught?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
There we go.
So, looking at the long-term plan, there's, there's a line for the pool, and there's a line for the building. The building is 700,000, the pool is 2.8 million. And then, there's, there's actually a third line that has the 500,000 on it.
So, there's almost 6 million, that's all budget for this fiscal year?
For the pool, correct.
For the, okay.
All right, any other questions? Yep, go ahead.
So, for the, okay, so the Kraus Anderson is 2.5 million, and we've got 5.9 million. Where, what's the, what's the additional 2.5 million or whatever?
So, we have, you know, climbing walls, rope swings.
So, that's all the amenities?
Dyer jumping platforms, shade structures, lifeguard chairs, you know, there's, there's a lot of other things coming in. Some of those are on steel structures. So, I was actually on the phone till 5:30 tonight, talking with the people that are getting our quotes pulled together for that.
So, we think the amenities will be the same cost as the structure of the pool?
No, they should be considerably less.
Okay, so, so that was, okay, so that was my question, so we're going to have quite a bit left over.
I'm very hopeful that is the case, yes.
Okay.
And then additionally, construction management, that has to come through yet. That's another future item. All right. Looking for a motion.
I think it's down there.
I saw Forrest.
Forrest, you want to go for it?
Yeah, I, I, yeah. All right, so, I move to award of contract for pool improvements at the Crystal Cove Aquatic Center.
All right, looking for a second, go ahead, Tracy.
I will second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That's fantastic. Let's hope it stays that way. All right, next, the council will consider. Consider a resolution authorizing the modernization of the elevator here at City Hall. Ben, Ben Perkey is here to address the council, welcome again, Ben.
Thank you. So, City Hall was built in 1964 and remodeled in 1994, our current elevator is a 1993 model. With that age, parts are becoming difficult to find replacements for, and then also, mechanical portions of it are becoming obsolete. So, with the modernization, not only will we address those issues, but we'll be able to meet current ADA and safety standards, and also have increased reliability by having newer technology. Funding for this long-term plan has $200,000 set aside for elevator modernization this year. We received quotes for both the elevator work, the low quote was from Cone Elevator for $108,000, and then the electrical work, the low quote was from Lake Town Electric Corporation for $18,000 for overall project cost of 127,000. So, today, council is being asked for a motion authorizing the modernization of the City Hall elevator with Cone Elevator and Lake Town Electric Corporation. If that'll take any questions.
So, first question I had was, this is a kind of reworking the same space, it's not a complete replacement, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Forrest?
Has the elevator had any, like, people been stuck in the elevator?
To my knowledge, nobody's been stuck in it, but there have been times when it hasn't been operational.
Okay, but, and it's currently passing safety inspections for the elevator, for elevators?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Sounds good, and then, my other question is, with this modernization, is there an estimate in how long it'll take? Like, how long this will last before another major?
What's the, are you saying until we would need to do an upgrade again? I don't know the lifespan of this technology, but I would assume it would be at least the 30 years that we've gone with the current one.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
How long will the, how long does it take to refix it, and how long will it be out of service here?
That I do not know, but I can coordinate with Adam and get an answer to council for that.
I believe about three weeks. It will be down for some time.
Okay.
So, we'll need to coordinate with the contractor for when that, now, different parts of it are going to be done, you know, because there's different aspects to it, but I know at least, at least three weeks.
Yeah.
Is the estimated time.
I guess the plus side, there's not a ton of things in the basement, so would be easy workaround.
Yeah, it's a fairly low-use elevator, I mean.
Yeah.
All right, anybody, anything else? Yeah, Tracy.
Is this just the elevator and like the cables, or is it like the whole shaft and everything, or what?
It's work within the shaft itself as well as the elevator.
Okay.
All right. Looking for a motion. Tashi?
I'd like to make a motion authorizing the contract for modernization of the elevator at City Hall.
All right, thank you, David?
I'll second that.
Thank you, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay? Motion carries. Thanks, Ben, you're still here, though. Sorry. This is for the authorization of a contract for construction materials testing the utility reconstruction project for 2024. Ben?
As you all know, with our reconstruction projects, we contract with material testings firm. This includes any backfill compaction that we do, the concrete, the paving materials. We have funding available from the various project funds. We received two proposals, WSB was the low at $26,000. WSB also did our materials testing on last year's projects. So, tonight, you're being asked for a motion to approve the contract with WSB for the 2024 utility reconstruct material testing.
All right.
Take any questions?
Thanks, Ben, go ahead, Forrest?
I don't really understand what this is. Is this, so like, they're, they're just test, they're like doing quality control, kind of?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
There we go, okay.
Yeah, this is, it's a valuable service.
Yeah.
Sometimes you get a bad batch of something, you don't want it. All right, any other questions? Seeing none, looking for a motion. Forrest?
All right, I move to award contract for the construction materials testing for the 2024 utility reconstruction project.
Thank you, David?
I will second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay? Motion carries. All right, what are we on?
75.
75. Next, we'll look at a resolution declaring several diseased trees on private properties as public nuisance. Ben is here to discuss that with us.
Yep. City Code Section 2015 governs our process for dealing with diseased trees in the city. 11 properties that are remaining from ones that have been notified about diseased trees and have confirmed with Emerald Ashbore. Letters were mailed out to all of the properties, and these ones are ones that have not responded. All letters were included in your council packet, we have heard back since council packets were distributed to you last week, from three properties that they will be addressing those trees. So, tonight, first, council is being asked if any property owners are in attendance, to allow them opportunity to speak, and then, the motion declaring that the diseased trees a public nuisance and ordering them to be abated. And at the bottom are the three addresses that are removed from the original resolution. 3008 Florida, 3509 Georgia, and 6917 Markwood.
All right, John?
How much time do they have to remove the tree if, you know?
So, I was speaking with Troy about that, we're going to allow 30 days before we would go in and abate them ourselves.
Okay, very good.
And the people, or the properties that have kind of worked with the city that were on this list, how long do they have to do it as well?
They're coordinating with our park superintendent to do with that. Our, our big process with this is, we want to get rid of the trees, and that's why we have the notices and the process for it. The big thing is just responding to us and coming up with a plan. So, if they at least respond to us and we work stuff out with them, we don't hold them to a specific date as hard as we will with this abatement.
So, they come up with a date and you'll check back up?
Yeah, we're not going to let them go like all summer or anything like that, but we're not as hard-pressed as we are with these ones that have not responded.
Okay.
John?
And this is specific to Emerald Ashbore, or is this shade trees in general?
Shade trees in general, the ones that are remaining are confirmed Emerald Ashbore.
Okay.
I think it's.
So, if this, if the city goes in and takes the tree down, I read that they get assessed for that, as they should. Do you know, does that cost about the same as if they hired somebody to do it, or?
Typically, when we hire a contractor, it's, we're doing a group so we get a little bit better price than if they were to do it as an individual.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think on the memo, there's, there's some, some interest charges on there. So, probably at the end of the day, if it does actually go onto their, their property tax, they're going to be looking at a little bit more than what we're paying, so.
I understand that, but just wondered what the cost would at the get-go.
John?
So, if they're assessed for the removal of the tree, do they have to pay that off in one, one year, is that?
Five years.
Five years?
Yep.
Kind of a heck of a deal, isn't it? It's like, you know, just sit back and wait, right?
Can they request to have it assessed?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yep.
This is getting better and better, isn't it?
I think it's very interesting that almost all the properties are in Section 1 and not Section 2. I wonder if that's because Emerald Ashbore already, what?
What are you saying?
I don't, I think, I think maybe all the ash trees are already dead up in Section 2.
So, if you two are going to fight, we're going to have to make sure that we're adhering to rules here. All right, Troy, did you have something?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council, I just wanted to add a couple of words. The way this is set up in the, in the code is really to give the property owners plenty of a notice and opportunity to, to take care of the problem. In this case, in fact, the city has taken an extra separate of providing an additional notice than what's required in this. So, at least a couple of notices of you need to abate this, there was notice of this hearing tonight, or an opportunity to be heard at least. And then, tonight, just to be clear, so when you adopt, if you adopt a resolution, the idea is that then the city would give one final notice. If this is not abated within 30 days, then, based on your order tonight, then staff can move forward and, and get these abated. So, just want to be clear that this process is purposely notice-heavy and gives people plenty of opportunity and process before the city actually has to step in and abate this, which is a citywide issue, I mean, as we know. So, this is one of those things where the law allows us to step in and take care of these problems if they don't.
All right, thank you, Troy. Forrest?
And then, one other thing, I know last year, we had, when this came up, we had talked about the method of delivering the, the notices, and we talked about, like, actually having staff knock on the door, did that happen this year as well?
Yep, so, the, the first notice was generally in the fall, September, October, for most of the ones that are, you have in your packet. And then, in February and March is when we delivered the second notice, and that was mailed as well as delivered to the property, and actually posted on their door.
Okay.
And then, this notice went out at the beginning of the month for this council meeting and the opportunity to be heard.
Okay, is there a chance that some of these properties are vacant?
Not that I am aware of.
All right, yep, go ahead.
This, please note thing at the bottom of the letters, the citation, these fines, are we doing that? Are we fining people weekly?
No.
So, why is this on here, do we do this in some situations?
If there, if it gets to that point, that's, that's kind of boilerplate language. In the tree cases, that's not, that's not part of the process. So, we could, it, it's a kind of as we were talking about with the cannabis ordinance, it's a tool, we have the ability to, but that has not been the practice or the required result.
Okay, so nowhere in this process that we're going through now, are we going to enact anything like this? I just want to confirm that.
Yeah, go ahead, Troy.
Mr. Mayor and council, right, I, I think to the city manager's point, I think that notation is to emphasize the importance of this, and that, that it is subject to administrative penalty, but, you know, you've heard from staff that that's not what they're doing. It helps that in this case, there's baked into the code an opportunity to get this fixed. So, the city has the opportunity to make sure that this gets resolved if, if the owner doesn't. So, I think that mitigates somewhat the, the need to impose the administrative penalty.
Okay. Yeah, for what it's worth, I would, I would be opposed to any kind of fines like that in this process.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none?
I have a question. So, the five-year, the five years, if it's, if this is assessed, they can pay it off over five years. Have we, is there an option for negotiation on that, maybe 10 years or something? Because for some, I mean, I think cost is a, is a meaningful barrier for some of these folks that maybe aren't taking action. Even paying this off over five years, you know, especially with this interest rate of 9%, could be a meaningful hit on, for them. So, I'm just wondering if there's flexibility there, if we've explored other, I know other cities have given options of 10 or even 20 years. So, just curious about that five-year thing. If there's any flexibility there.
The, I believe the Hennepin County is five years, the, I'd have to, I'd have to check on this, just to verify it. But, the, the 20-year, it, you know, it's a thousand dollars, let's just say between 600 to 1500 dollars. Over the 20 years, I, I want to say, Troy, maybe, I don't know if you're looking something up. I, I, I don't think that we have the ability to negotiate longer, depending on the, because I, I think there's a restriction on the, kind of the life of the work. Like, it has to be, the amount of time given has to be related to the, the expected, you know, this, I think five is the maximum that we can do for this type of unpaid, it's essentially unpaid service charge. Same type of assessment.
Okay.
So, the, and, and just so that, so that everybody understands, the, the interest that goes along with it, the city actually has to pay to assess things, so there's administrative charges and administrative fees that the city ends up paying with all the assessments that we, we do, not just the staff time, but the, we actually have to pay the county annually for all the assessments, and it's based on the amount of assessments. So, that does factor into it, the, the reason, the rationale for the, the assess, the interest.
Okay. Troy?
So, Mr. Mayor and council, just two quick comments on that. My experience is that most cities would, would lump some of this in a single year. So, the fact that you're stretching it over five, I think is generous. And just a quick read of the statute, I think you do potentially have some flexibility, so if someone really is in dire straits, there might be some ability to work with them, but there, again, you, you're talking about further interest, payments, and staff time and things like that. So, there's, there's a bit of a balance, but there is a little bit of flexibility in here, but the statute makes it clear, it can be a single-year assessment, too.
I think another thing to keep in mind is like, these nuisance trees aren't like a nuisance in terms of like a junk car. They're like trees that could fall on a street and be a ma- major cost, make a house uninhabitable, fall on power lines. And that happened in my neighborhood on an ash tree, it was, yeah, like, it's, it's a hazard.
Tracy?
Have we confirmed all these houses, all these addresses are owner-occupied, there's no rentals in this list?
Some of them are.
Some are.
Yep.
We contact the owner.
Okay, how do you get them the notice? Just mail?
The owner?
Yeah, not the renter, but the owner of the property.
Because we generate the list of the owner of record.
Okay, so we're just mailing to them, we're not, we're not, obviously, we're not hand-delivering. Do we hand-deliver to the property as well as mail to the owner?
We hand-deliver to the property where the tree is at. If, if the property owner is landlord, rent, landlord-renter relationship, we do not hand-deliver to the property owner if they are not at that residence.
All right, Therese?
What, has the city gone through this before, where they had several properties taking down trees?
Correct, last year, I believe it was a similar number that were presented.
All right, Forrest?
I move a resolution approving, can I do that?
Yes, please.
Okay, yeah, I move a resolution declaring the diseased trees, trees public nuisances and ordering them abated at several private properties.
Okay, looking for a second. Tracy?
I will second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay? Motion carries. All right, thanks, Ben.
Thank you, too.
Next, the council will consider two actions regarding the ordinance prohibiting the use of cannabis products in public spaces. Our city attorney, Troy Gilchrist, is here to address the council, welcome, Troy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. As you recall, this was up for first reading at your prior meeting. The thrust of this ordinance is to. The thrust of this ordinance is to identify public places, so there's definition of public places and then prohibits the use of cannabis within those areas. Their statute, as part of the cannabis law that was adopted last year, it expressly gives cities the authority to prohibit public use. And so, this ordinance came out of a moratorium process the city had adopted. This reflects that same approach. So, the city is taking a consistent approach from the time you first acted on this and now it's before you today for second reading and adoption if the council is so inclined. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Troy. Any questions for Troy? Looking for a motion, then?
I can move on that.
Thanks, John.
Make a motion approving a resolution, summary language waits, is that right?
Before that.
Before that, I'm sorry, the one above that. I make a motion approving an ordinance amending the Crystal City Code to prohibit the use of cannabis products in public places.
All right, David, you wanna second that?
I will second that.
All right, thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Motion carries.
Just jump on the next one?
Yep.
Make a motion approving a resolution for summary language for publication of ordinance number 2024-02.
All right, David?
I will second that.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Motion carries. That is our working agenda for the day. We do have a couple announcements, but a material drop-off is Saturday, April 27th. And that's at the Brooklyn Park Works, City Public Works at 8300 Noble. And then Police Department Open House is Saturday, April 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And that's here at the police station. Parks and Recreation Commission will host an annual Arbor Day celebration. We had the proclamation tonight and that's May 1st from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at Skyway Park to accommodate Crystal residents practicing Nomo May, which provides habitat nutrition for early-season pollinators. We will be looking at June 1st for long grass enforcement. The next Crystal City Council meeting is Tuesday, May 7th at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers. It's also available via Zoom and that's at 7:00 p.m. Friends of Crystal Park Plant is Saturday, May 18th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And that's at Becker Park. Reminder that Crystal meetings are available online for your listening or viewing pleasure. That's for previous meetings. And do we have any other announcements? Yeah, go ahead.
Not an announcement, but a question, do we know what trees they're giving away at the Arbor Day?
Yeah. No, we don't.
We don't know.
We just know what tree is being planted.
Yeah, the red oak or something.
Yeah.
I don't recall.
Okay.
I, I, there's a list somewhere, but I, I don't have it.
We don't know what the list is. All right, you did comment?
Yes, I just wanna talk about the bulk item pickup that went, that was within the city for the last two weeks. Very successful, matter of fact, someone thought I needed a new TV. They dropped that off at my house, so if you're, if you do have the cord, please bring it by. And it's, which is great, so if it doesn't work, then I can take it to this, you know, special materials drop-off and, and get it donated at the proper place. And then, um, the only thing I wanna talk about is Nomo May.
Well, before you get away, I got shocks, I got two shocks.
You got two shocks?
Yes, it was fantastic.
You wanna trade?
No, I'm good.
Oh, you sure? I have the TV and the. That's another thing, the TV was so heavy, I couldn't even lift it. I, I, I couldn't believe it, you know, I mean, I can deadlift like 180 pounds, but I couldn't even lift this thing up. I was like, oh my gosh, so it sat in, you know, it said, buried my fence, it sat in front of my house for a couple of days, hoping that someone would realize it, you know? Couldn't do anything with it, but no, I still have it. Anyways, and I also wanna talk about Nomo May, that there will be signs, I believe there's gonna be signs handed out at the Arbor Day celebration, so.
There usually are.
Yeah, so if you're willing, if you wanna participate in that and you wanna have a sign out in front of your house, please get one at the Arbor Day celebration, so.
All right.
One quick question, I don't know if I'd ask it here. Do we have resources in the city for the chafer beetle? That's eating the lawns?
I will have to check on that. Is that the little green Japanese?
Yeah, and it's just like destroying the lawn.
They're called spiders, so if you have your grass a little longer, especially Nomo May, you'll murder them, you know?
There, there is actually, the U of M Extension Service does have a full page, my neighbor across the street. It's like, there's, you have to do a whole thing to get the grubs out, yeah.
All right. Things I didn't know. In the work session, I wanted to talk a little bit about ribbon cutting for hope licker. That was on Saturday, I believe. It was, it was really, it was a fun one. There's the, having, having the cultural experience of the owners there, hope was there and to see the Small Business Administration come in and they're a huge part of, of making that happen. And another African organization was involved. But, yeah, I just wanted to congratulate them on, on what they're doing. It really did take a community on that one, it was a lot of fun. There was some dancing and stuff afterwards, it was, it was pretty cool. The, the point I really wanted to make was in relationship to staff, John Sutter, working with them, helping them, they couldn't say enough nice things about what he did. It was fantastic to hear that. Having staff always go the extra mile, I wanna thank everybody for going the ex, extra mile, cause I know it's not just John. Sarah's for the liquor license. Oh, Chrissy, yes, oh, for the liquor license, yes, of course. But I, I would, I would say, I almost feel foolish at those places. It's like John should be up front and center, you know, and it's, it's just, I just wanted to honor where honor was due, so. Thanks, Chrissy, thanks, John. And the rest of you for what I know you do. All right. Anything else? Looking for a motion, John?
So moved.
That's a, a German, I'm presuming?
Yeah.
Tracy?
I will second that.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Motion carries. We'll see you next month.